This is what happens when you're promoted and you don't know what to do. Jim, would you come forward and give us a pledge and an invocation, please?
Well, good morning, Lord. I'm amazed that you, the Creator of everything, have welcomed us into your presence through prayer. And as we think of the number of volunteers in our county, so many good things are done by them, we'd asked if your favor and blessing would be upon them. And in just a few days, Christians around the world will be celebrating the resurrection of Jesus. Thank you for loving us, sending your Son and making provision for us. May your favor be upon this meeting this morning, and may you be honored by the things that are said and done. In Jesus' name, amen.
You'll face the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Call to order and roll call.
Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Thayer.
Here.
Commissioner Pettit.
Here.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Please take the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Please vote.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the elected officials and department head staff reports. Is there any of those that would like to be presented?
Good morning, Commissioners. From Bobby Cheveria, Elbert County Facilities. Just a update on the road and bridge shop that we're in the process of building. Be kind of quick, and we don't have a lot of changes from last month. Couple of the biggest changes we have is we did get a, or getting a letter to to serve from the town of Kiowa for our water and sewer. We will be drawing up an IGA with them in the next few weeks, so we can get that done. So that's a, that's a good step in the right direction for us. The other thing is, we've got, we had, we don't have all of our plans and stuff finalized yet because we had some new things come to light that's going to save us some money. We had a huge drainage plan. Basically, we're gonna try to run water clear from the east end of the property to the west end of the property along Highway 86, so we had to have a drainage. With the existing culverts that are in Highway 86, we don't have to do that now. We can utilize those culverts. We're gonna have to have a few detention ponds, but it's a lot less than what we were thinking we were gonna have to do. So they have to do a whole new grading plan for that, so it's pushed us back a little bit. But we're still right on schedule with starting construction in July, breaking dirt, and the building will be here mid-August, somewhere in there is what they're telling us. So we will, we'll start then, so. That's, that's kind of where we're at. We're, we're, once we get the drainage plans and all, all of those finalized, then we can start back with CDS doing our zoning. We can't get our final plans, therefore, we can't do the zoning until we have that done. Yep?
Good morning. Wanted to share with you a little bit about the Community and Development Services Department. This is our annual report. PowerPoint wasn't quite connecting well, so imagine, if you will, a PowerPoint up there that talks about this. The CDS Department, Community and Development Services, is basically three different divisions, if you will. Economic Development, Planning, and Code Enforcement. The Economic Development Arm of CDS gave you a presentation back in February. There are 1.5 FTEs associated with that, so I'm not gonna dive too far into that because you already heard about them a few months ago. Planning has six FTEs, including the CDS Director. I've been here about six months or so. Senior Planner, which is under recruitment. There are two Planner Ones that are assigned to this department. One that has been associated with our department for nine months, and one that is planning to start next month. We also have a Planning Tech. There are, the Plan Tech's been here about three months, and then the Administrative Specialist has been around for several years. The boards that are served by Planning include Board of County Commissioners, Planning Commission, and the Board of Adjustment. The, the current planning arm of planning, those are the applications that come before you. Land use applications, zone changes, subdivisions, and that sort of thing. Right now, in the pipeline, there are 80 applications that, there are 80 properties that are being considered. Variety of applications might be on each of those sites. So it's something that we have to know a fair amount about, all those different properties as they come before us, and then they eventually potentially come before you. The majority of the applications are on the west side of the county, west of the Kiowa-Bennett road, essentially. There's about five. Let me back up. Forty-one applications came before you this last year. About five of those were east of the Kiowa-Bennett line. The other part of planning that is more of a long-range planning sort of application includes a variety of different plans and things that get created over time, so Housing Needs Assessment is one of those applications. Not applications, excuse me, things that are being pursued. Firms have been interviewed for that. There's an Economic Development Master Plan. There's an RFP out for that. Open Space Master Plan. 1041 Regulations. There's a meeting tomorrow afternoon or evening at 5:00 to discuss those. Those are up on the website right now, and then a three-town overlay as well. Upcoming long-range planning needs include a update for the Comprehensive Plan. The last one was done in 2018. About every five years or so, you need an update, so that'll be something that will be considered as part of the budget for next year. And then the following year, Development Code Update would be appropriate to implement. Any changes have been done with the Comprehensive Plan. That Housing Needs Assessment that we just mentioned, a housing plan would be appropriate to come out of that. Last piece of CDS, or the Community Development Services, is Code Enforcement. We have one FTE for that. In 2021, the number of cases that were closed were 165. They have 179 active cases. Those cases closed have gone up. There were roughly 80 or so in 2019, about 120 in 2020, so they've gone up fairly significantly to 165 over the course of a couple of years. From a zoning compliance standpoint, we've been getting, Mike Moore has been getting good response from the community. Getting people to bring their site basically into compliance and working with them to make that happen. The completed and corrected number of cases has gone from about 41% up to 47% over the course of a couple of years, and the number of, the percent of people working with the county, which is basically defined as trying to resolve the issue and find a solution to that, has gone up significantly as well. Those cases that are typically seen for code enforcement include construction activity, barns are going up without permits, RV living, and then trash on property as well, so a variety of things that they have to address as they're going through that. Number of active violations by location, and those are by zip code. The most that we see are by Elizabeth, because that's where most of the people live, in that general area. The second highest is Parker, again, relatively high number of people in that general area, and that's by zip code, so realize Parker is not in Elbert County. That's just kind of a brief look at CDS and some of the things that we go through over the years. Happy to answer any questions that you have. Look forward to serving the board over the next year.
I think you referred to it more than once, but planning for the future is high on your list of important things?
Absolutely. It's something we have to, you know, plan for and devote resources for, so that we have good plans in place to implement, you know, the boards and the residents of the county's will and direction.
Do you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other elected official or department head that wishes to speak? Is there any other department head or elected official that wishes to speak? Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is citizen public comments. I think we have a list here of people that have identified themselves, and if there's others, we'll give you an opportunity. Brenda DeVoe?
Actually, my name is Brenda DeVoe. Is that okay? It's a tough one.
And I've got a speech deflect.
Oh, no worries. My name is Brenda DeVoe. And I'm just, I live in El Paso. And I'm just here to play my opposition to the XL Power Pathway. Thank you. The reasons that I'm giving for this is because mainly the animal life, well, there's several examples. The animal life would be affected by these transmission lines. It would severely impact their habitats. I have the sandhill cranes that go over my house every, every October. I know there's, I've seen bald eagles, golden eagles, of course, the owls, and a lot of the bird life. Of course, it would affect the other life too, like the elk I've seen, the pronghorns, the deer. They would be affected by these transmission lines. The next reason that I would not like to see these come through is that the electric high voltage can cause hazards to people's health. There's different reports that I've read about how it affects their health. Also, the noise pollution and the air pollution are just two examples that this could cause. Another one with that is that people that are along the transmission lines, property values would drop 40 to 50% is what I've read in different real estate reports, which is quite a bit because it would affect the vistas that a lot of people have on their property. Also, it would open the door to the wind turbines and the solar panels, which again affect animal life, people life. Also, it's just another can of worms that would open up into this county. And none of the, that, those components that make up the wind turbines and the solar panels are not recyclable. And the noise, not, well, I guess the noises, yes, the noise. I've been underneath those wind turbines and the noise from them, also the light pollution that they cause. And I've read different reports where they could cause drought conditions or contribute to the drought conditions. I don't know if you've seen those or not. The next one is the transmission lines also have a potential to cause a fire. If something happened, you all have experienced these high winds we've just had the last three days. They could bring it down. We get a lot of snowfall, usually. That could also be a problem to cause the transmission lines to come down. And the other last reason is they don't benefit Elbert County. They are benefiting Denver, the population of Denver. My suggestion for this would be to have XL bury the power lines, the transmission lines, if they insist on wanting to come through Elbert County. I know other, I've read other reports where different counties and different states have had that happen. Also, or they could take it down the I-70 corridor, which I understand there's easements for that particular purpose.
Commissioners, that's three minutes.
I'm sorry?
We kind of have a three-minute limit.
Oh, sorry. And so that's my, that's my, that was my solutions, or take it down I-25. Thank you for listening.
Well heard.
Okay.
Okay, Rick Gordon?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rick Gordon. I live down at Simla. I'm here for the same reason, to talk in opposition to the XL Power Pathways transmission sighting. There's been some misconceptions. I attended the meeting they had in Simla here about a month ago. I was here at your meeting a few, a few weeks ago as well. I didn't speak at that time, but major misconception that the XL people are saying is that this will benefit Mountain View Electric. I'm on the Board of Directors of Mountain View Electric. That's absolutely not true at all. There's no way for Mountain View or Tri-State that supplies power. I'm also on the Board of Tri-State Generation and Transformation Association. There's no way that we have any access to that transmission line. Tri-State was excluded from any of the, they were initially part of this project, but about a year ago, whenever XL got the PUC approval to do this, they told Tri-State, no, we don't need you anymore. Tri-State's working on their own line, but it's not in this area at all. We need, we need transformational lands out on the, out on the very far eastern side of the state. My son-in-law was here last month with me. My son-in-law and daughter have a home, a beautiful home, about a million and a half dollar home out on the east side of the county. Has a beautiful vista of Big Sandy Creek. The proposal line, 5100 line that they're talking about, will be within about a quarter of a mile of their house and their view, their vista that they have of the big sandy water, or Big Sandy Creek. I, when I, I attended the meeting in Simla, I told the XL people they needed to consider using the, the transmission line that I think the lady just ahead of me visited about. There's a huge transmission line that collects the solar or the wind project, the Rush Creek Wind Project out in my area. My family, or I and my family own and operate about 13,000 acres out on the east side of the county. Those wind turbines are there. We're probably not gonna get rid of them, but they have totally destroyed the vista. They've totally destroyed what I think is a beautiful view of the flatlands of eastern Colorado. But there is a huge substation, a huge line that goes from that substation southeast or southwest of Lyman that gathers all the renewable energy from the east side of the state, takes it up a transmission corridor on the east side of the county that's already there. I suggested that they use that corridor instead of building a new one west of that corridor. I don't, I don't know that they're gonna consider that, but that's some of my comments, my concerns. I know you will probably have the ultimate authority to be able to at least be involved in the sighting when it comes to the permitting process. I understand they haven't applied for a permit yet. Lastly, I just want to make a comment. Serving on the Mountain View Electric Board, I think maybe Sarah Schaefer from Mountain View has talked to you. We, our Board of Directors embarked on a major fiber-to-the-home project this last year, and we're working on that right now. So our goal with all of our members in eastern Elbert County, in El Paso County, and the counties we serve, is to get at least 500 gig, or 500 megabyte or a gig ability for every one of our members at Mountain View to have that. During the pandemic, we also, all saw the concerns that those that were trying to do remote learning, remote working have huge impacts. We're hoping this will have a ma-
Commissioners, that's three minutes.
Thank you. Hopefully, that'll have a major impact or help benefit to our county. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there any, that's some of the ones, that's the only ones I have on the list. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, when you come up, you need to give your name and address.
My name's Chuck Hughes, 19753 Weidemeyer Road. Okay. I second the comments by both previous commenters. And, you know, what bothers me is that we're out looking for the whole of Elbert County, of course, as are you. But we've talked, a lot of the talk before is these, with the political situation now, and the fact that rural Colorado is being made the vassal of the ruling class of Denver Boulder and to their service, and they can make their life better by destroying ours. I don't like that. So how do we define success? Well, we want to look out for all of Elbert County, but in my opinion, the Biju Basin is the jewel of preserving. We've talked about the Biju Basin before. It is relatively unspoiled, in the words of the game warden, local game warden. It's the best wildlife habitat in Elbert County. I believe that. I see them every day. So I have a proposal. Let's give the Biju Basin some identity. This is an action item that maybe we can start doing soon. Let's give the Biju Basin some identity. A lot of people, when you talk about the Biju Basin, go, huh? What's that? I propose that we put a location sign. You see them around the west a lot that says Biju Basin at every road entrance to the Biju Basin. Just using my mind and experience, I can only think of seven. Would be just one location sign saying Biju Basin. And that seven includes each entrance to the basin on the west side and east side. Eastside Grant, living near, that would identify when you're transitioning into the Biju Basin. I think there's only seven. I went and talked to Road and Bridge. They don't mind the idea. They tell me that the total cost per sign would be about $350. That's materials, having the sign made, having the post, and county labor to go install it. So I think it makes good sense regardless that, and will help us give it some identity so that we can preserve that gem out there and look out for the wildlife. So, thank you. I'll yield 33 seconds to whoever's next.
Thank you.
Brenda Kelly, 26501 Flower Circle.
I apologize. I don't hear well. Could you say your name again, please?
Brenda Kelly, 26501 Flower Circle. Simla. My name is Brenda Kelly, and I live out east in the XL Power Pathway proposed corridor. I'm here today representing the many people who live out where I do, who have given up. They don't think their voices are heard or that anyone cares. Families who choose to live the rural life on the Colorado plains make many sacrifices. We can't order pizza. We can't even get ice cream home before it melts in the summer. We spend a lot of time driving to work and play. We pay more for electricity, garbage, gasoline, homeowner's insurance, and heating fuel than in-town folk do. But we do it gladly for the life we get to enjoy. The peace and quiet, the majestic views, the wildlife we share our fields with. To realize that we will continue to make, continue to make all of these sacrifices and in addition lose all of the benefits we were willing to make those sacrifices for is unthinkable. Especially when losing it means absolutely no gain for us, but only helps those who are unwilling to make these sacrifices. It's bad enough that our daytime views will be ruined, our nighttime views marred by blinking red lights, and for our family, we already have this on the east and the south, so this project will add them to the west as well. Our natural beauty destroyed, that the wildlife will move away, that for some, human and animal health will be ruined. But add to that the increased financial costs we will endure. I speak of the increased cost of homeowner's insurance due to the increased risk of fire. The reality of this risk has already been seen and demonstrated in California. I've seen firsthand how quickly a fire can get out of hand out here. My daughter arrived home late one night and commented that she thought she saw some burning embers along the side of the road about five miles away. I called 911 and then alerted a neighboring family with young men who took tools and burlap out to fight the fire, which I could now see from my back deck. The fire was less than a quarter mile from our home, but that home, from a home, but that home was unaware due to the trees that blocked the view, but would be the fuel to bring the fire to them. Fortunately, the neighbor young men were able to get the fire out, and when Simla and Kiowa, Kiowa Fire Departments arrived 30 minutes later, they just had to clean up. That just shows that rural fire departments, though through no fault of their own, cannot respond as quickly as needed, and this fire was along Highway 86, not in the middle of some rancher's acreage with no road access. Insurance companies are not stupid. They will be quick to add costs to each and every homeowner out on the plains if this transmission line goes through the Biju Basin or anywhere out there. Will those living in town pay for those increased costs to us? I'm asking you to stand up for us. I know it could mean reduced income to the county, and I know your decisions can be overridden by the terrible eminent domain laws that have been passed. But when money becomes the driving force, as it has become with this green energy push, all logic goes out the window and lives are left broken in the wake. Please, help us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to make a public comment? Sir, there's a seat up here if you need one. You want to make a comment?
Yeah.
Please.
So I forgot the routine.
Yeah, please give us your name.
John Mott.
Say again, please.
John Mott.
And then we need your address.
Physical? 18087 County Road 150, Kiowa.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'm here to talk again about the XL project. I spoke a while ago on this. Some of this got interesting. I went to one of the public meetings with XL, and I really do caution about granting the ability to put in wind turbines in the transmission line. When I spoke with them, I asked them, several of the people with XL, representing XL, about how come they don't put wind turbines up by Boulder, and I said, and I was told that the wind is different up there.
It's hot air.
I won't comment on that one. I, I thought maybe it sucked instead of blow or something. The, the other thing I realized is the transmission line, it's one of the current proposed routes I'd said earlier, but I realized it actually goes, oh, I've got a second home. It's kind of a bunkhouse or whatever that I could. And the transmission line right now goes over top of it. And they were unaware of that. In fact, my name wasn't even on the mailing list at the time. I've also been told that by, when I met with XL officials, there's been a number of times that they've actually just out and out lied on different items on that. They said the whole thing is about sustainable energy, and I said, I asked them when I, they asked about that, that it was dependent on wind and solar. They said, well, we also have natural gas. Well, just skip the other part and go to natural gas, because they have to have a redundancy rate built into that. I've also been aware, I have a part of a family ranch in Montana. They're putting in wind turbines, hundreds of them. One of them is closest 200 feet from the ranch house. I, I think that these wind turbines, and the more I've researched on them, the cost on them, I don't know if it's even feasible. If you actually count in the entire cost, transportation, manufacture, building, excluding the fact that they're using rares, minerals, and materials, and have no way to actually dispose of them once they reach their 20-year lifespan. I also believe that there are alternative methods of electricity generation that'll come online shortly that will basically make the wind turbines obsolete. And the big push on those, especially for what they look like when you go out there. I still am not a big fan of blinky red lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? There being none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Did you have any comments, Rick?
You know, we, we've all been hearing what you're saying, you know, and we agree, you know, with, with everybody what they've been said. And at this point, like Rick said, there is no application, so, you know, they're holding their open houses and stuff with proposed routes and where they're moving it, but we really don't know where it's gonna be at this point. So it, we keep trying to, you know, recommend that they go out east also where the existing power line is. But until they come to us with a proposal, we're sort of up in the air like he-
air like you are, and just hoping that they come up with something so we can decide, you know, and we will have a decision on it, but ultimately, it could go back to the PUC if we deny it, and then they can overrule us and say, this is where it's going to go. But hopefully, we can have enough influence that we can get it where we want it, that at least, maybe do the least amount of damage, whether it's views or anything else, but until they really come to us with their plan, like I said, we're up in the air and until then, it's, everybody can speculate, but we don't know.
Yeah, everything Rick said, I agree with 100%. I've had one meeting with our CDS, with them on the power line, and the line I kept using with them is, go east, young man, go east, and they said, no, the saying's go west. I said, well, I'm dyslexic, so it has to go the other way. The whole point is, is that we understand the Biju Basin and the wonderfulness of it, and if it has to come in the county, we're going to work very hard to push it as far east as we can. And what Mr. Gordon said, that parallel to the existing Rush Creek line, that seems like an obvious route. When I brought that up, they said we hadn't thought of that, which I can't believe. But the whole point I'm getting to is, we don't have an application. Of all the maps that we've had, and again, what Rick has said is right, the first map I saw, they were going to go right through the town of Kiowa. And now there's been multiple lines and crooked lines and all sorts of things, until we see, and I guess it's the engineering me that's coming out, until I see something that's really planned, I don't even know how to negotiate. It's one of those things that, I do appreciate all of the public comment, and I encourage you to continue to do that and make sure that XL recognizes that there is a public viewpoint here. And if we have the capabilities, and Rick mentioned the PUC and some other things, but for them to approve, get it approved by the PUC, from my research tells me, it takes considerable amount of time. And for a project of this size, time is your enemy. So what my hope is, is that'll give us a little bit or some effective discussion, negotiating, I'm not sure what the right word is, a presence, but we don't have any application yet, we don't know the real route, and we'll pay attention and thanks for your comments. The next item is discussion items. Do we have, I don't have any identified here, is there anyone here that wishes to speak with respect to a discussion item? Okay? Then we'll go on to the action items. One of the things that, it's such a pleasure being a county commissioner with all of the volunteers that are working to make Elbert County a better place to live, a safer place to live, and all of those kind of things. We've got several people here that have volunteered for county, volunteers and consideration, and I got to thank you very, very much. What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask each one of the leaders of each of these, like the sheriff, or the fair board, or the victims assistance, I'll ask the leader to come forward and make a little presentation that they would say thank you to the people that they're working with, and then after that, I think Trish has already given you our certificates of appreciation. And also, there'll be, there's two sets of boxes over here that have what I'm going to call gifts, or a token of appreciation, whatever the right word is, that I'd like you to take enough of those for each and every one of your volunteers and give it to them if they're not here. If they're here, give it to them here, but, and again, did we mortgage the county to get these? No, but it's just our wanting to look each and every one of you in the eye and say, thank you. The first one on my list is Shane Pines.
And let me just add, if you do have a volunteer here, if you'd recognize him so we can recognize who's here.
Yes.
Good morning, commissioners. It's my privilege to acknowledge the efforts of all the volunteers present here today, and all the effort they put forth for our county government and our community, specifically the volunteers for the Office of Emergency Management, several of who could not be here today, but I do have one in attendance. The efforts of these individuals have supported a myriad. Yes, Kim Nelson, I was going to recognize her at the end, but Kim, I'm speaking to Kim. The efforts of these individuals have supported a myriad of preparedness, response, and recovery elements for our county. Efforts include emergency sheltering, mass communicating, resource coordination, planning, responder training and education, and the design and development of a virtual incident management process, as well as a variety of other admin progress, without which I would not be where I'm at currently as a department. The time, the energy, and the expertise of these individuals has been tremendously helpful to the Office of Emergency Management. With that, I'd like to recognize Kim Nelson. Kim? Thank you.
Thank you. The second person on my list is Janet Maloney.
Hi, I'm Janet Maloney, and I am the coordinator with the Victims Assistance Unit with the Elbert County Sheriff's Office, and we have had Michelle Johnson here, and she brought her three boys with her. She's been with us volunteering since January, and she's trying to get her criminal justice degree also, so hopefully she's graduating in a month. So she's still planning on volunteering with us, and we just appreciate her so much. She comes in two days a week, sometimes three, and whenever she can. So I imagine going in school and having three kids, it's tough to volunteer for us, and it's a tough job anyways, being a victims assistance, but we appreciate everything you've done for us, and thank you very much.
Next person on my list is Scott Neseo.
Commissioners, how are you? I have three different stacks of people to go through. The first that I will go through is the Reserve Officer Program that we have. And these are actual certified law enforcement officers from other agencies, other career paths that have chosen law enforcement, come to us, and they are now volunteering, and they do the same job we do, they just do it for no cost, so to speak. Scott Austin is right over on my right. He comes to us from Douglas County. He's got about three years of service total, and he is now volunteering as a reserve officer, our deputy with us, in detentions. And we appreciate everything that he does for us, which entails pretty much everything a normal deputy would do in the detention's program on a daily basis, and he can move back and forth from the courtrooms to transports to inmate handling, take your pick. It's quite a job and we appreciate it very much. The other two I'll just name is Mike Daley. Along, they do the same thing as Scott does, but they are on the patrol side. Mike Daley comes to us from Aurora PD, 36 years, commander of Aurora. He is a reserve with us as well, and we also have Brian McPike. He comes to us from United States Army. He also is a 34-year police officer and comes to us from the University of Colorado Springs, Chief of Police, and he's going to be a reserve for us as well, on the patrol side. Next up, we have the gentleman in light blue behind me. Don't have to say a whole lot, I think everybody here knows who they are and what they do. These guys are amazing. First thing I'd like to get out of the way is, one of them, that does a lot of good for us and helps us, it's Dan Baca. Dan is not here today because Dan is in hospital. The remainder, and I will just say names, and if I say your name, if you'd just stand up for a minute, and we'll get through this, starting with the captain of the posse, Ken, Ken Bettis, Dave Blattenberg, Ken Coburn, Brent Danielson, Brett Evans, Rich Hines, Ken Kirk, Jerry Mavor, Jim Phelan, Ken Ronk, and Kirk Van Houten. These people standing behind me are amazing, absolutely amazing. We have veterans, we have people from all different career paths, we still have some working, Martin Marietta, on and on and on. These people have decided that it's their best interest to come to Elbert County and help us do our job. In the last three years, they've saved the county in excess of 12,000 hours of time. Just last year, just a bit under 6,000 hours, or give or take, if you paid them 25 bucks an hour, about 120 grand, or 150 grand. It's a lot. And that's only one small part. They go to fires, they go to accidents, they go to everything that we go to, they take people to territorial prison, they work in the jail, they work with the VAs. I believe they worked with almost everybody in the entire county at some point, and if we didn't have them, we'd be in deep trouble. Absolutely no question about it. And during the pandemic, we would be sometimes down three, up three to up to seven people in a day, sometimes for two weeks, and these gentlemen here took their time to come in and put their finger in the dike so we could continue to move on. Our concealed handgun carry, 100% handled by these gentlemen back here, and that is ballooned out of control over the last year's numbers. They're there every day doing that for us. They do ranch watch, I mean, I can literally stand here for 45 minutes and go through everything that they do. They are amazing, we love them, and we respect them, and we appreciate every second that they help us. And there is one left, one division, and that would be the Advisory Committee? Okay, we'll just leave that on the floor. We have Mr. Ken Cardwell, Gus Gustafson, Mark Mikowski, Dan McMillan, Brandy Miles, Ron Turner, Danielle Nusshwinger, and Matt Parenti. This is a group of individuals from the county that live in the county, and they are concerned citizens that come and have a meeting with the Sheriff's Office once a month, or more if necessary, and talk over the things that are going to affect the people in this county, law enforcement wise, and other things, but usually law enforcement wise, and what they can do to assist getting word into the county about certain things, and pretty much everything under the sun that's important to us and important to you as commissioners. And they give up their time every month to come in and have a chat with us and try and keep everything moving forward, and they are very much appreciated as well.
You got them all?
I do.
Thank you very much, I do appreciate it, and thank you for reaching every one of the individuals that you identified. The next person on my list is Tammy Schneider.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, but more importantly, thank you for taking the time and this day to recognize our amazing volunteers of the Fair Board and those that serve under the realm of the Fair Board. So we are a working board of 16, all volunteers, each giving at least 60 or more hours a year in the creation, planning, and execution of what we call the best week of the year, the Elbert County Fair. So I am very pleased today to be able to take this time to say thank you to those members that make this possible. First of all, your county staff. I see Bobby Chivaria is here, as well as Michael Sarabia, and so if I could ask Michael to stand up and Bobby to stand up. We wouldn't be able to do what we do without your help, but also these two gentlemen who make our lives incredibly easy and work tirelessly with us, not only during the week of the fair, but throughout the year, attending meetings, keeping us up to date on what's going on at the fairgrounds, and also in the planning and the execution of the actual event. So thank you, gentlemen both, for everything you do. We could not put on an Elbert County Fair without you. We also work very closely in conjunction with CSU Extension Services. Callie Benson is here today, I'm going to ask her to stand.
She's going to be brought forward also.
I know she will, I know she will, but she is, she is very modest in what she does, but her and her staff, Trina, Lori, and Willie, work tirelessly to help make a 4H event happen, which is what makes our fair very special. Elbert County Fair is a very unique beast in that we not only worry about what the public needs, but also what our 4H community needs and can be served by. The fair is the culmination of everything that Extension puts on throughout the year, from our master gardeners participating in different ways, but also to our 4H kids and our FFA programs that participate as well. So Callie is an invaluable resource to our Fair Board and to this county, and I want to recognize her for her dedication to our kids and to the Elbert County Fair. I have 16 board members, I am the only one who is here today, but I will give them their certificates and their gifts, and thank you so much for your support of us and all that you do to help us make a wonderful fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call Callie up in just a second, but I want to remind everybody that's here, we've got donuts and water and that kind of stuff, so if we want to get a personal gathering together after the meeting, which shouldn't go too long, or if you want to have your group have a picture taken with the county commissioners or with your leadership, we've arranged for Trish there to take your picture so that it can be given to the public and our own website. Callie, it's your turn.
But when we get done, we are going to try and get a picture with all the volunteers that are here with the commissioners, and then if you want one with your own group, we'll do that.
Sounds good. Well, good morning, commissioners, my name is Callie Benson, I'm the Director of Elbert County Extension, and to echo Tammy and everybody else's comments today, thank you so much for taking the time to recognize the volunteers that are in Elbert County. The Extension Office, where we house our main 4H, excuse me, 4H program, as well as our dedicated group of master gardeners, we house over 125 volunteers in this county alone. We truly could not do all the work that we do within our community for all of our youth, for our community members with their different questions and opportunities for their continued learning, without these certified and dedicated volunteers. They truly do yeoman's work of getting everything done, making those connections, and dedicating all their time and knowledge to anyone in the community that wants it. Present here today, we have Dan Guthrie, as well as Tammy Schneider. Earlier today was Troy Levey, but he had to go to work. So just a small fraction of who we have within our community, but I really just want to say thank you so much to all of our, all of our dedicated volunteers and especially you all.
The last one on my list is Greg Thompson. He's responsible for the, well, you tell him what you're responsible for.
Hi, I'm Greg Thompson, I'm responsible-
Hi, I'm Greg Thompson, I'm responsible for the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is nine members, there's currently just been appointed an eighth one, so we have one opening. The Planning Commission is in charge of a variety of things. They review land use applications and give a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, and oftentimes, or at least on occasion, can have kind of a cantankerous crowd associated with that, so they certainly have to work through a variety of legal issues as well and ensure that they meet all of those requirements. They're also charged with the Comprehensive Plan and making sure that that is updated on a regular basis and reflects the community. So a lot of really important things that they are responsible for. The members that are being recognized today include Roger Burton, Mike Buck, John Surbeck, Dwayne Owens, Danny Wilcox, Peter Hugendike, Dan Maholick, and Van Sands. Dan Maholick just recently resigned his position, but all of these people bring a wealth of knowledge and background and experience, and that's something that is really appreciated by myself, you know, they're able to fill in a lot of gaps for folks that haven't been around as long, so they give recommendations to you guys, I'm sure you appreciate that as well. So appreciate all of the Planning Commissioners, the time they spend. They have two meetings a month that they have to be done by resolution by 11 o'clock at night, so sometimes those nights get kind of late, so appreciate them, thank you.
Before I become Commissioner, I spent 14 years on the Planning Commission, and so it made my ability to understand how to work with the public valuable. We want to thank each and every one of the people that are here for what they have done. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak with respect to our volunteer groups?
Commissioner, I'm going to interject, I do have a proclamation that the county together. We're extremely fortunate and blessed with a number of volunteers across virtually every single department, and we've seen several of those here today, but we did want to read a proclamation and recognize formally the contributions that these volunteers make to the county and by extension to the residents of Elbert County. So I will read this proclamation, it's entitled, "Proclamation: Recognition of Annual National Volunteer Week," which is April 17th through the 23rd of '22, and it reads, "Whereas the week of April 17th to 23rd has been designated National Volunteer Week by President Richard Nixon in 1974, to recognize the hard work, dedication, and passion of volunteers throughout, and whereas many gave their time, which is a testament to the compassion and generosity of the American spirit, and whereas Elbert County recognizes its valued volunteers providing countless hours of community services in emergencies, Sheriff's Department, the Fair, emergency management, and community and development services throughout the year, and whereas Elbert County believes that government, nonprofit organizations, and individuals stand together to meet our citizens' needs, and whereas the county is committed to encouraging volunteerism throughout the community, county, and nationwide. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Elbert County Board of County Commissioners that we do hereby officially recognize and designate April 17th through the 23rd of this month as National Volunteer Week in Elbert County, and sincerely thank all Elbert County volunteers for their contribution."
Thank you. You can see that I'm immature here as being the chairman, because we were supposed to read that first, but I think it does, and most importantly, it does summarize the belief of the county commissioners. We want everyone in this room to recognize the appreciation we have for everything you've done.
No, I just want to say thanks to all the volunteers, because I know how many hours and everything that you guys put in, and if it really didn't matter to you, you know, on your job and to the people you're helping in the county and stuff, you wouldn't be sitting here today, so I thank all the volunteers for all your time and effort.
And Commissioners, I just ask for a formal vote on passing that proclamation.
I'll make a motion, we approve the proclamation. Second.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to go on to the next section on the agenda here, but I'm expecting each and every one of you to eat a donut, so hang in there, this meeting won't last much longer, at least that's my hope. Consideration of the March 23rd, 2022 minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the March 23rd, 2022 minutes and dispense with the reading.
Second.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is Building Department, 2022 Fee Schedule Resolution.
Good morning, Faith Mayor, Building Department. And this morning, the Building Department has amended the adopted fee schedule to reflect the most current published ICC valuation table, it was updated in August of 2021. This was publicly noticed in the Ranch Land News, March 31st and April 7th, and the main piece of information here is that the only part of the fee schedule that this affects is items that fall into that valuation table. The miscellaneous fee schedule or flat fees for permits isn't changing at all, so the Building Department would ask the Board to adopt by resolution the update to the Building Department ICC valuation tables for permit fees.
Is there any material change?
There is. So as everybody is aware, values of construction material have gone up considerably, and that is what the ICC bases their valuation tables on, is a national average, so this will change permit fees for items that fall in that valuation table approximately 10% as an increase.
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
The other item I would like to bring before you is the second reading of the ordinance to...
We need to pass the resolution on this first, yeah.
May I have a motion, please?
You want to see if there's any public comment?
Yes, I do. Is there any public comment with respect to Faith's presentation here? Is there any public comment? There being none, we'll...
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 22, number to be determined, Resolution Adopting Building Department 2022 Fee Schedule.
Second. The vote?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. The second thing I'd like to bring before you is the second reading of the ordinance that is amending the adopted building codes for the purpose of eliminating unnecessary amendments previously adopted by Ordinance 1804. The current code amendments were adopted in 2019 with the guidance of a chief building official that has since retired. The current chief building official would like to reduce and simplify them for the benefit of the public. We haven't added anything to those amendments as we discussed in the first reading. So we're requesting action on this reading in contemplation.
Let me ask our attorney for a question, is the second reading adequate, or do we have to go more?
If we have, if we published and noticed, and it appears that we have, we can certainly pass on a second reading.
I guess we've got to go the same route again, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? There being none, we'll move on. Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we approve the ordinance to amend and restate Ordinance 18-04.
Second. Please vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the 2023 BOCC Budget Goals.
Morning Commissioners, Tony McCormick, Finance, an update and recommendation on the 2023 budget goals. The Budget Steering Committee has received the goals from the Commissioners, we've reviewed them, we've disseminated them out to the department heads and opened for a comment from them and received those. We've implemented any comments, they've all been kind of non-substantive, just edits and a couple of words added. We're looking forward to taking this document and the clarity it provides and the guidance for the budget process starting for 2023, and staff recommends we accept these.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? I'd like to make a comment, one of the things that Rick, myself, and Chris, and Danny Wilcox before us, when we were first elected, that we really didn't have any set of strategic goals outlined, and this, it says, Tony has joined us, this is one of the things that we wanted very badly, is to have a real goal of where we want to get, how we're going to get there, and the most important part of it is implementation, and thank you. Do we need to accept that, or is that just an administrative thing? Do you want it accepted, or formally?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the 2023 BOCC Budget Goals.
Second. Please vote.
Aye.
Okay, that takes us to the last item, which is a consideration of a resolution for County Road 178, it's an initial acceptance.
Commissioners, Rory Hale, Director of Public Works, you have before you this morning a resolution to consider the initial warranty acceptance for County Road 178. As you know, that's the road that was put in by the Spring Valley Metro District. We've gone through a couple of punch lists on the road. Road and Bridge is satisfied that they've completed the necessary changes, as well as the county engineer, Kimberly Horn. There is a couple of outstanding items, but I don't know that that would prohibit us from opening the road, should you accept this. Their streetlights, because of the national supply chain issues, will not be here until next month, and the snow fence that they're required to put in will probably be going up within the next couple of months, but I don't foresee that being an issue with weather, so there were some conditions of acceptance, and I don't know if that's something that the county attorney wants to speak to, I think those have all been addressed by the developer slash Metro District, so our recommendation is adoption of this resolution. My intent is, if you approve this, to notify the developer, the contractor, and the Metro District that it will officially be open tomorrow. That gives us time to get signatures on the resolution and get something on the website notifying the public, as well as the SO in particular.
Just for the public's knowledge, explain what the warranty period is.
Typically, the warranty period's a two-year timeframe. The county, in this instance, will take care of all snow removal operations, but any maintenance is the requirement of the developer. Prior to the termination of the two years, we will go out and do another inspection, possibly creating a punch list, and those items have to be corrected before it's formally approved. At that point, the developer will have to submit a written request to Public Works to petition the Board to accept the road as a thoroughfare, a public road.
So basically, it's to ensure through a two-year period that when we do take it over, it's in good shape?
Think of it as a probationary period.
Yes, that's good.
The nice thing is, and I will say this without any hesitation, it's probably the best road in the county, but because we've changed our processes, our standards, and our procedures, we're requiring the developers build good roads instead of just putting asphalt down on gravel.
Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? There being none?
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution granting initial warranty acceptance of County Road 178 with preconditions for the final warranty acceptance.
Second.
Aye.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you. Do we want to do board planning, or just go on to donut eating?
I'm not sure that there's a whole lot to do planning right now, and we can certainly put those on, any items on the agenda moving forward prior to our next meeting.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. Please vote. Okay, you've got to understand that if you don't eat all those donuts, Rick and I have to eat them, and our doctors have told us to... Oh, yes. You don't want to put on that much weight. So please come forward and get your picture taken as a group...